To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's from September 1st. Motion second. Discussion.
On the second page, number 11. It says to accept donations totaling $250 from benefit of Musulla Day. What's it from?
It's in the line below. It's just gonna be two benefit Musulla Days. It's gonna be two benefit Musulla Days because in the brackets down below shows you where it's from. I see what you're saying. Seeing none? All in favor? Number four, Charlotte, I'll start with you.
Everything's good.
Awesome. Nothing will be harder.
The only thing I do at roadside more on the state roads is Saturday, yeah. I had them, but I see, I did see the DOT, the tractor, had those little story yesterday, so I didn't know what they.
They told me it was a third-party contractor, wasn't it, with the state, so.
I didn't know if they were meeting Muslim or not. It wasn't. It was DOT, it tracked it along trail, roadside more, so I did not pay stamp. I'll follow up.
Friday, October 1st is the municipal association conference. It's actually Thursday, Friday, but Friday is with relevant staff, so we will be closed that day, so they can attend. If it is still being held, that's kind of up to me here right now. Municipal ballot layout design from November 2nd has been finalized. You can request those starting now, same with the state, but they won't be available probably October the 2nd. That's gonna be for the two local questions, that ballot specifically, then there'll be the three others there. Elcia Spooner up on Madison Road. She has been the rightful recipient of the Boston Post cane since last August, but with everything going on, we've kind of postponed that. She'll be celebrating her 100th birthday next month. So I'm working on a resolution for her, getting a little bit of background information, and she's requested private recognition just with her family, not even with me, so we'll be coordinating with her son and daughter-in-law to make that happen, and so ladder into the plaque, and then she'll have the duplicate cane for her keeping, so. The airport tomorrow, meeting on the taxi lane project in terms of closing Natto, that's now 14 months old, so we'll probably be releasing the final retainage on that. Cemetery Committee has met again, and they also did a site visit of three cemeteries this week. They're looking to get an assessment of the needs in the cemetery, whether it's stone ground, stone breaks, stone leveling needs there, and then try to work up some sort of budgetary estimate in terms of how could it be accomplished if the town is supportive of repairing stones like that, so, and then the priority list for that, so they're putting time into that. We're also filing an application for the historical society jointly to seek a workshop be held in Norah Rock from the Maine Old Cemetery Association, so they would come and provide a workshop one or two days on cleaning and leaning, so they would teach how to clean stones, and then also teach how to prop them up and whatnot. It's a limited amount of contribution that we would have to have, which would share with historical in terms of piece stone and things like that. But still, we're gonna submit that hopefully before the end of the week, just waiting for a couple of signatures, and we'll see how that goes, but that would be next spring if that came through.
How are you doing as far as attendance on those committees for the cemetery committee? Are they?
Cemetery Committees had three people at both meetings. There was a fourth person who committed to the first meeting and then didn't show up, and then that was held after hours, and then they just want, the three people on the committee set up a 10:30 meeting, 10 or 2:30 meeting this week, so that they can go out and actually talk to cemetery. You're not gonna have a 4:30 meeting before cemetery, exactly.
Yeah, is this supposed to be a five-person committee? Yeah, okay.
Yeah. One's not in the health and the other one's just absent, so. The Red Barn Works subdivision is moving forward. I would expect that we're gonna see a final plan review in October. We still haven't received formal application on Big Little Hill, so that's really on hold. At best, the planning board has said that they'll consider it at the November meeting, and that's due in large part to the amount of time it takes to conduct those plan reviews for subdivisions, so. That's where we are. There, Saffy, we took the tour last week. That was informative, very informative in terms of what's going on there and what's at stake for us and our neighbors. Taxes are due the 21st. We're making quite a bit of progress in terms of collection, 40% real estate, 95% personal property, so we discussed some pretty small personal property accounts we're seeing now, so we've received those management, just to speak, so that makes up the majority of that. Silver leans on last year's usage, July 1st, September, we filed in the morning, 17 accounts are in that status. And we did receive electronic payment of $170,000 for the first round of ARPO funds. So as we move forward, we need to look how we want to be spending that money in consideration should be given to sending whatever priority projects or expenses that we're looking at to the budget committee for review. It's gonna be, you know, $340,000 over the course of two years, and so I think we probably should be asking committees to generate their ideas and pass them up to you, and then allow you guys to review them, and then, you know, kind of put it through a town meeting style review. We'll see. American Rescue Plan Act, I think, COVID recovery, yes. I think it's called. The library trustees had their Chilwunke event next Saturday, the 25th. At 11 o'clock, that'll be at the Grange, free as always, those are always well-intended, so that should be good there. Usulla Days was a great success, both at the airport and the park, and it had a strong turnout, great group of volunteers, and the weather worked our way, so. That was a good experience for us. The wrap-up meeting was last night. We've got a lot of notes on the table for next spring when we start cleaning again. Thank you to volunteer, sponsors, vendors, and everybody that came to help make this a success, and we've been a good group here tonight. Appreciate it. Missing last night's meeting, appreciate that. And with the touch-of-truck feature at Usulla Days out to the airport, I instituted a $500 hiring bonus to attract operators' laborers in advance of the winter season, but down to three, four drivers going into the winter season, two full-time. And so we need to try to fill those seats the best that we can. The goal would be to pay that out in three phases over the course of 12 months to ensure retention on the back end. Subject to regular taxation and whatnot there. And then your soccer season is expected to begin next week. I've been working with town of Smithfield and Bobby Joe to use some of their field space in the interim, as our drainage project still isn't quite complete. We're pretty close, but we're still gonna get water to the shack, a couple of other small events included the pad over by the prospective storage building and the batting age, so it's coming along. We've got a bend for our buck on the price. And so everybody seems pleased so far. You've got your calendar there. Tomorrow night's that little seminar with our law firm. Next Wednesday is the KB Card General Assembly meeting. That's gonna be up to Big Little Brewery at 11, up to 1, and then the Tiff Committee will meet on the 28th, which they do have a couple of projects for them to consider. Moving that back to you, your first meeting in October. Motion, September 15th, general warrant, number 18.
I will approve general warrant for $183,398.68 to get the ball rolling. Hold on a second.
Hold on a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? That's everybody?
Well, is this, I know that we had something about the garage doors. Is this the final price? We had talked about the garage doors over at the.
We, that was approved, like, this expense round was approved if the last needed. The estimates go to third base. So there may be some residual charge to that, not sure. But I signed a contract with them. So that we can get on the work.
That is about what we figured it was gonna be, right? I'm good.
Okay, so all in favor? Both?
Going to school and it didn't match you.
Discussion action on September 15th, Airport Board number.
I will make a motion to approve warrant, airport warrant, number nine, in the amount of $5,258.87.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Both?
You don't present a certificate here, is it just? Okay. Department or is there an emergency alert happening right now?
Do you guys have a scanner in there?
I need a motion to approve the sewer commitment in the amount of $25,459.19.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Okay, so the question. Seeing none. Discussion action on appointments. I have a one. Yeah. I have one appointment to put before you today. You do not have an application in your packet because this person is not applying, you know, anything. We just finished up a remarkable weekend for Usulla Days after months of planning. And so I kind of paid for doing this. We have adults that volunteer for doing this, whether it's through business or being conned in by one of your friends to do it. But there is one person that is just done it because that's what they wanted to do, because they had a passion for it, and that is Abigail Claire. And through all of this and all of our meetings, she has worked her phone, she gets on that phone and she calls and says, hey, I need you here. I need you on this date. You need to bring your fellow volunteer. You gotta bring your volunteer. You gotta bring the snow bus. And she has kind of paid for it for us, and all through the weekend, whatever we asked her to do, she did. And beyond, she was in the river kayaking for the duck race, she was face painting, she was giving kids, keeping them in line with sack races. And all of that is what makes a parks committee member. And so my recommendation to you would be to appoint Abigail Claire as a parks committee member.
Salute.
All right, so all right, there's a motion and a second, I'm sorry. Right, so motion, the second, any further discussion? All those in favor, all in favor? That's you, ma'am. Congratulations and thank you. How you're really a senator. Thank you for helping out. And then we're not gonna let her leave here empty-handed, and what's not on the agenda is, I'm asking your approval of a resolution. Whereas the town of Norah Rock hosting annual Usulla Day celebration every Labor Day weekend, and people from across the region attend the family fun days, and the 2021 Frog Race Celebration was founded by Big Al Lewis, and 2021 was the 48th annual event. And Abby Claire is the great-granddaughter of Big Al, and Abby Claire has dedicated herself annually to volunteering to organize the event and accomplish any task to make Usulla Days a success. She proudly carries on the tradition of her family and community. Now therefore, it'd be a resolve, and I of Norah Rock Select Board to recognize Abigail Abby Claire for her spirited involvement and exceptional volunteerism to support Usulla Days, helping to promote a stronger community for people of all ages and abilities. We didn't crowd. I got to finish.
I'll make a motion that we whatever this is called, what is it? A resolution? That we approve the resolution for Abby Claire.
I'm sorry. Motion second. No further discussion? Or is there any further discussion? It's your cake. She was supposed to bring the cake.
I told her to get a cake.
Is that the snow machine running on there?
I'm gonna go to school and tell Addie Lynch that like you actually do something.
All those in favor? Okay, yeah. I don't have my, sorry. Thank you. Abby, what did you think you were coming for today?
I didn't know, just to say.
I'm gonna sit to a board. So you need to be a town report too. Especially around the meeting, not even on that.
Can we point to the school board next?
You ready? You're gonna have to swear, be like you're going to court. You're gonna have to repeat what I said, all right? I, Abigail Claire.
I, Abigail Claire.
Who swear that I will support.
Do you swear that I support?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I.
So long as I.
Shall continue a citizen thereof.
Shall consider a citizen as thereof.
Sure. I do swear.
I do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As Parks Committee member.
As Parks Committee member.
According to the laws.
According to the laws.
And Constitution.
And Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Your Parks Committee member.
Teach him a handshake later on, because everyone is watching.
Not so many people, they didn't. All right.
We don't even have those.
Just to wrap the duck in. All right, now you're on an excellent for next year.
Yes.
All right, that's your slip of paper. Your slip of paper, and then that's a resolution.
Dominic, just.
There you go. Thank you.
Did you, you guys, did you mind? You wanna pitch up with that?
I'm trying on eBay.
Yes, I made a.
It's gonna go on your baby.
When you wrap you up in a blanket.
You'll have texts, so. Anyway, please. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Well, it's in school quarantine, so. The only place I want to go is school.
Discussion action on investment services.
I believe new. Our committee, right? Except like being 139 today, depending on the weather, although there are a lot of.
Like Addie can be as lucky as she feels like it.
That's different. Because that's our going on. As to where these are appointments, they're not.
Wait, why are there rings? I mean, like, did Haley, what's his face, um, let me resign from the school board's party? Because we would appoint someone for that one, right? Where he's like coming on, maybe that's probably gonna be points.
Do you have a question for the man there?
Did Haley resign his spot on the school board?
We have no loss of any resignations.
But we would appoint in that situation.
If someone were to resign, then the board has the authority to appoint at first to an elected position until next year, when it settles down.
See, it's like if that had an answer to just went back and pulled it up for you.
Okay, right.
So if someone leaves the town and stops going to meetings, do we request that resignation, or?
No.
No?
It's not required that you're a resident of the town to be school board.
Or to even go.
No. There are running discussions. There are, but there's been discussion about the potential for an ordinance or something to go through town meetings that would have an expectation for attendance. But that would be something that people that I spoke to wants to cross all boards. But, I don't think that gives.
Okay, so I do want to kind of re, kind of regroup from where we were before. So part of this today is kind of nail down investment strategy, the charts of aggressive, conservative. So kind of talk through that. Obviously, open to any questions that has been raised from last time. So I figured we could start with the investment side, maybe to answer some of the questions that you guys had before we got into that. And then, like I said, anything that you guys have left over after that. You know, address any concerns, questions, all of that stuff. So where we kind of left this off last time is we were trying to decide basically what the strategy for the, I call it endowment, more or less the endowment would be wanting. So there's a lot of things that really kind of go into that. So I sent Richard a survey that he completed. It's about 10 questions. And what it does is it starts to gauge basically on a level of 1 to 100, how aggressive we think this should be. So with that said, it came back as kind of a moderate strategy in terms of the survey, and that's what we had originally put into the proposal. Richard and I have since talked since then, and I think we want to kind of nail down exactly what that looks like in a little more detail. So if you look in the back at any of you guys, that first page here, that's the survey that Richard took. So again, the hard part with all of this kind of stuff is nothing's satisfied its all. So even if a survey spits out, okay, you want to invest it in this sort of fashion, it might not necessarily be that way. So that's where I think for me, but from all of you, will definitely help nail down what that looks like. So I think kind of to start, you know, when we look at this, we're looking at this being a very long-term investment. So, you know, we're looking at 11 to 20 years anyway. And with that, there is a reasonable expectation to take on a little bit more risk. But with that said, this is kind of a different venture where it's also the first time the town has invested this much. So I think part of this is gonna be kind of feeling out period. And it doesn't necessarily mean that whenever we decide in terms of how aggressive versus how conservative, once we decide that, you know, today, it doesn't mean that we have to stick with that forever. So maybe it's, we get into this for a few years, the board feels more comfortable with everything, and we decide to step it up a notch. Or vice versa, people decide to go the other way. You know, that's always a weak target that we can, we can work through. So like I said, the survey came back as a moderate strategy. The more we talked, I think that might be a bit too aggressive. And if you look down towards kind of halfway through, there's a chart that has a plus 9,000, negative 5,000. For me, that's one of the big ones that I look at through this whole survey, and that's a really good indicator of what the, you know, long-term risk that the town is willing to take on would be. So, you know, I think it really helps kind of look at what happened last year with the market. So 2020 was a very crazy year for the market. The market does have drops like 2020. They typically happen every 15 years or so. And we essentially went from 2008 to 2020 without any of those significant drops. So, you know, when we look at this, the market from January 1st last year until March 23rd was down about 40% from top to bottom. So when we look at a moderate strategy, a moderate strategy would have about 60% in the market, and about 40% in fixed income investments, so things like bonds, CDs, more conservative investments. So, you know, when you look at the market being down 40%, that moderate portfolio was down about 23, 24%. So I sent these numbers to Richard a couple others in here. And I think that kind of, you know, raised some eyebrows in terms of, I think that might be too, too aggressive on that side. With that said, the moderate portfolio goes through that 22, 23% drop. By the end of the year, it's up about 12%. So again, it's a short-term significant drop. But what I would say is if that's something that you guys all look at and say, you know, we don't feel comfortable with that level of risk, then I think we want to downshift a bit. And I think, you know, as we kind of talk through this, that would be the case. So, you know, taking that moderate score that this scored out as, what I have in front of you guys is kind of a moderately conservative strategy. So do you want to kind of talk through two of them, differences? Pros and cons of both, kind of what the upside downside looks like, and I think for all of us, that should be kind of a collaborative discussion in terms of where you guys feel a level of comfort makes sense for this going forward. So, you know, that first page here, this just shows the breakdown between stocks and bonds in that. So the conservative strategy is gonna be about, and again, these are floating numbers. They change depending on what we make for changes, depending on market conditions, that sort of thing. This snapshot right now is showing about 25 to 30% stock investment on a very conservative side. The next level up from that would be about 40, 45% in stocks. So I think if you look ahead, I think the big thing is if you look at page six here, at the very bottom, this shows if you look through the past crash that we had last year, looking forward, what those hypothetical drawdowns would be. So with that, you can see, you know, remember when I said forward, because the moderate strategy is down about 23%? Again, makes sense, these all dropped a little bit. So moderately conservative strategy, we've dropped about 16%. So, again, these are worst-case scenarios. Not much will match what happened last year. But with that said, it does happen on occasion. The big part of that is staying invested through this anyway. So it wouldn't be that we'd get to the 10% down, and I would recommend, okay, we need to settle, because that would be the absolute worst time to do that. And that kind of shows going forward. So, you know, if you would have kept invested even with the conservative portfolio last year, that's gonna be up about 6 to 7% by the end of the year. So, yeah. The really, really tough times are really, really tough. But if we can get through those, again, that's where my counsel, the counsel of choice really comes into play, where we have those conversations, talk through what's going on in the market. You know, and if we should make changes, or if we should stay where we are, those sorts of things. So, you know, with all this, there, we wish there was a perfect solution of something that's conservative and that has a really high return. But we all know that's not realistic at this point. So, you know, you can see on page eight here, if you look about halfway down, you'll see the past drawdown, which is, you know, we talked about before. So the conservative strategy is down about 12%. The, and that's over basically the last five years. The upside of that is that that strategy has returned about 5.9% per year on average. On the flip side, the moderately conservative strategy has produced about 8% return on average per year for the last five years. But again, that does have the larger drawdown. So, you know, part of this is, it's kind of cliched, we want to win by not losing. So I always kind of come at it from the perspective of, if I was sitting in your shoes, you know, someone upset with whatever's going on investment-wise with this, would you rather answer the question as to why you make 5% instead of 8%? Or would you rather answer the question of why you lost 20% of process time? I think we all can agree what that's gonna be, you know? You'd rather take a little bit, yes, than to make sure you have that offer on the downside. So, you know, kind of the more that we talk through this and look through what this looks like, I would be more comfortable with you guys going with the conservative strategy at this point. That would be our recommendation going forward. And again, that could change down the road. You know, I think a lot of this is kind of a feeling out period in terms of, you know, certainly it's not gonna be like a bank account, so there will be fluctuations. But when I look at that, the conservative strategy definitely limits those, you know, fluctuations to quite a step. So again, are you gonna have as much on the top side? Not necessarily, but with this, the goal is to have a reasonable rate of return that's consistent over a long period of time. And that's where I think this more so fits the bill.
I agree.
Yeah.
Miss Olson.
So that was what I had on this piece of it. I know there were some questions from before or questions on this too, if there's anything. So the rest of this basically just showed is kind of breakdown of investments are. So, you know, everything we do is more on a conservative basis in terms of we don't pick individual stocks. So we don't take big bets on single companies. So in the US market, there's about six thousand companies that you can invest in. We certainly don't have all six thousand in there, but we have a very good chunk of that, which makes sense. We want to limit the downside. Part of that is that we see that single stocks can be very volatile. So even Amazon can be down ten percent in a day. I don't think that's one of the specials, especially for this kind of situation where you want to have those kinds of fluctuations. So everything's very spread out. You know, there's some detail on that side of it. Within this, Apple is the biggest holding through the entire portfolio. But when it's such a conservative portfolio, it's only going to be about four percent of the entire account. So again, that's very small relative to, you know, the entirety of what that account looks like. Yeah, so it's spread out between obviously varieties of companies in the US. It's spread out between international companies. So with a conservative strategy, we do have a much smaller allocation to international. But being proven investors, there are opportunities, international ones, just as there are in every piece of life. So sometimes the question is, is it a good time to invest in the market today? You know, I get that all the time. There's always something that is a good time to invest. You know, it's not always the same. It always changes. But there's always something that presents some kind of opportunity. And that's what we're charged for is finding the best value, the best investments for the long term growth. So that's why we try to spread that out, you know, as much as possible. So it's again a variety of USA and international, um, variety of sizes of companies, varieties of, uh, different sectors. So for instance, right now, we're not really big on energy companies. So that holds much smaller allocation than technology companies, you know, just different types like that.
I mean, in today's world, you almost have to be in the market some extent to get any return on.
Yeah. Yeah, so. And that's kind of where we're here, you know, part of my job would have been a lot easier twenty years ago. When interest, interest rates are four to six percent. We can take this conservative, you know, approach and put twenty to twenty five percent into the CD that's going to pay you four or five percent. We're all going to be happy. And then you take a small sliver and you buy stocks. Whereas right now, to your point, interest rates are essentially nothing. Inflation's continuing to go up. So this year inflation will be close to five percent. Which is a very abnormal year, you know, usually it's about a percent and a half, somewhere in there. But with that, it's all a reason that you have to buy stocks to at least keep up with inflation. You know, that's a conundrum that we haven't really needed to deal with for a while. But now it's here, and that's why even with that conservative strategy. You know, that previously would have been twenty percent stocks. Now that's creeping up to about thirty percent. And the biggest reason for that is interest rates are enough. So you need to get, you know, some kind of return, more so on the stock side.
One of the things that we've talked about in the past was the optics behind certain holdings. Do we have the ability to avoid that? Or if something hits the press tomorrow, do we have to drop the entire fund and reinvest somewhere else? Or do we have the ability to stock and say, no, we're not going to invest in that?
Do you have some?
No, uh, I don't know. PTWA, okay, you know, something like that where they just go rid of that really quick or, you know. And you don't want to be reactive. You don't want to be completely major. The CEO did something that's still married to the organization, but.
So I think that's. Yeah, I think that's more so why we spread things out as much as we do. Because there are plenty of examples of a very high level company where there's an accounting scandal that no one saw. Well, the stock price drops forty to fifty percent on these portfolios. If that's, you know, a miniscule piece of it, you're not even really going to notice it on the overall counter balance. If there is something that comes up, we can handle those on an individual basis and see, you know, what the example is. If there's always alternatives.
So maybe it's more social optics, I'll say.
Well, I was, well, yeah, I'm curious what this, what the type of like full transparency is to every day, every citizen of Nordwog where every single stock is in the town. You know, because I'm guessing there is a fluctuating like, these are funds. I'm guessing that it is like, I mean, what are you going to be, is there like a ticker that's going to go across like the town webpages like, we just bought a penny stock like.
We're, we're.
I'm guessing that's not going to happen.
One of the concerns is that if you had an organization that, uh, with media the way that it is, whether it's a social something or other, uh, you know, just something that's so faux pas. It's not even economic implicated. It's social implication. And that are, are we holding stock in that company?
Yeah.
And people call for people to divest all the time. And my question was, do we have the ability to say, oh, is that something that might naturally happen through attrition of the fund?
Yes. Yeah, so, so part of that is that we're looking for quality long term companies. So to your point, something that comes up like that, we would also be looking at and saying, okay, it's not something we want to hold on to. But what I would say is with any of those kind of things, let's keep open communication. And let's make sure that all of those things are addressed as they come. And we can always find some kind of, you know, solution. But yeah, it's becoming ever more an issue going forward, so.
You got anything else you can think of?
I know, I, this I appreciate it very much. I look at the description and I, I'm, I still look at it, except in moderate risk to see higher long term returns. And I'm like, that sounds very reasonable.
So this is, this is a little bit different because like the top few questions in terms of the net worth, the income, those sorts of things. When they're related to an individual, an individual is able, if an individual has thirty million dollars, they have a buffer so they can take on this. It's a little bit different when the town is answering these questions. So that's why it's smeared a little bit is because that was.
Well, that made it easy for me, right? Nice, because I'm definitely not.
Where are we at with that?
We got a consensus built here. Is the consensus of the board that the conservative financial mix here is this solution, uh, would be this, if we were to invest, that would be the solution for the town. As opposed to the moderate conservative.
I think so.
Investment strategy.
Yeah. I feel like I'm not a financial expert, and if the financial expert says yes, I feel like.
Yeah.
That's probably.
I tend to, I tend to err on the side of caution too. And especially if something like this, again, the biggest part is the circumstance around. So this is new money, new investment for the town. I think that's where we take baby steps.
And all the previous people before us took zero exposure. Can't just save, to save, to save. So I mean, I think so, it's fine, although it did be conservative.
And it's not a reminder of exposing it.
Yes, you know, I mean, yeah. And as I, yeah, because you could put your money in the bank and get some.
It all comes back to you.
It's totally a burden, but you're not, not doing that.
Yeah, right. And you guys aren't, we're having these same kind of discussions with all of our endowments, all of our nonprofits, all of that in terms of, this is an ever evolving picture. So the markets are changing, interest rates are changing, like all of these questions are perfectly reasonable questions. They're coming up more often now. So it's definitely not, you know, a unique.
But as you just said, the money may have said the bank is losing money. We have five cent, I mean, five percent inflationary. Needing a quarter percent return, losing four percent on the money.
And for me, this would also be different if this wasn't purely going to be long term funds. You know, that's one of the biggest components to why we recommend, what we recommend is, again, we don't want this to be, you know, one year quick fix kind of thing. So if this was something where it's going to be kind of the operational cash, I would say we're not going to do this at all. But with this, where if it's truly going to be, you know, at least a ten year time horizon, like Matt said, I think you guys need to do what's in the best interest for this long term. And unfortunately, at this point, the only option is being somewhat invested stocks, you know, to get that, to get that return.
So I agree with that, but as you said, I mean, it's just, are you talking locking this money up for ten?
No, no, because the board, the whole board can change each year.
Yes. So your board can say, hey, we want to put it back in the bank.
Correct. So honestly, if we invested this money tomorrow and you called on Monday and said, we want all of it, all of it gets swept back. Nothing's locked in, nothing's tied to anything.
No penalties.
No. All we'd have is the fees to trade, which we wouldn't, we buy it, and those are limited. So it's not, not a huge deal. And what we would do is we would tie one of the town's checking accounts to it. So if we had to do that, we could give the money to you and I think, you know, it goes just like that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm locked up. Really lock it up for ten years. We don't know. Might be five different people serving that. With every conversation I had with all the, uh, opposers, it was, what do you use this money for? Do you see immediate needs? And it just came out of what I would say would be the only potential that we have to tap into it now, this long the bankroll, the store upgrades. Instead of taking an anticipation note, so, um. You know, we're just shy of nine million dollars in bank today. At the end of the day, we're, did we get a fifty thousand dollar deposit then?
How much was it?
Did we get fifty thousand one, was it?
I haven't seen it yet.
I haven't seen it yet.
I think it was.
So what's our total investment number like right now?
Uh, substantial, substantial, but we don't want to go all in.
No, we haven't decided that yet.
So in my mind, as we initiated this process. The host money, we've got a host emergency account that's got one point two in it, and our host benefit has got ballpark two point seven. Right now, so that's all the residual. Everything is coming from host benefit. We allocated excellent revenues to be on roads and now just general reduction taxation. When we've taken an overage, just in host benefit is two seven. And that's going to continue to build. So we allocate a six hundred thousand dollars this year to offset taxation. Uh, we're going to use probably eight and a half months worth of tipping fees to satisfy that, and the rest of it's going to be a whole bridge account.
So this, this is an account, you know, we invest a certain dollar amount today, a year from today, we can push more money into that same account.
Or that would be where my mind was.
Yeah.
Because we, we, we issued a request, and I think it would ballpark two point three. Was the assets to be awarded to command, and that has, you know, the implications of good faith and, uh, the rates that we are able to get uh, for assets under management and whatnot. I mean, you know, that does ladder down, but I'm, in my mind, I'm looking at probably two point five to start. See how it plays out. We're going to be in close communication with a successful proposal. Uh, that's still not official, but we're going to get that. But, you know, you're going to have those, you're going to have to step, you know, how are we trying to, and we can't, you jerk out to six more rests.
Right.
Shouldn't. But again, the uniqueness is that in six months, new board. So we, uh.
In one of the thoughts. In terms of like whether it be school boards, nonprofit boards, whatever it is, we try to make it a point, again, depending on what the board wants to do. I like to go in and educate workers new just on what's going on, because it's different coming from Richard than it's, as it truly, it's going to be. So, you know, it's always good. I think part of my job is to educate everyone that's involved in this, in what's going on. And do I expect you to know that that's the most fair thing we do? Absolutely not. But I do think there is a certain level that we all should feel comfortable with what we're doing. You know, that's just a natural, natural way that we want to do business.
So back to Jim's question, then a year, what was for more money in this capital zone? Is she doing that?
No, it's the same thing. So we can pull it in electronically, we can do all that very seamlessly.
That's the ideal scenario focus where we're able to just increase. Ideally, we'll, we'll see how that.
He's like, yeah, I will make it not be going at all, or you give me more money.
We try to make that right as he sees.
Seamless, right? Yeah.
And we're just ready to, we're going to continue, take our gains and put it right back against the same.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So we just see what we have for growth there and then, right? My life insurance type of option, but it was great to be taken, didn't it? I built that.
So I know there was one question about kind of what happens if choice is out there. So I do want to kind of talk about that piece of it. So what we do, we have what's called a registered investment advisor. That's what Choice Wealth Advisors is. So we use what's called a custodian to hold all the assets. So we use TD Ameritrade for that. So TD Ameritrade is the investment arm of TD Bank. They've also recently been bought by Charles Schwab. Uh, TD Ameritrade, they hold about one point two trillion in assets. They service about six thousand RAs like us. So the example is what happens if choice goes away? The money is still held with TD Ameritrade. It's not held with Choice Wealth Advisors. We trade on the TD Ameritrade platform. They custody it for us. So all the money movement goes through TD Ameritrade. So again, we close shop, we're not there, the money's still out with TD. Very well, they would hook you up with another TD Ameritrade advisor. But nothing's lost in terms of the town and the account. You know, there's that clean separation between us and TD Ameritrade. That's where the money is, so. Anybody else got any questions?
So the consensus was a conservative strategy. Now we need, well, we can take consensus on the advisor, successful proposal. We've not done that before.
Right.
So the consensus is going to be that we would, uh, move with Choice Wealth Advisors.
I will, then we go with Choice Wealth Advisors, and we move forward with the conservative approach, and we wrap this up this evening.
That's how we're in the matter.
Oh, I still my drink. That excited me down. And it's supposed to be.
Yeah, so it was probably a little early. We need to have discussion of, do you want a fixed amount? Do you want an up to amount? And how do you want that?
About two, two point five. About two, two point five.
Yes, yeah.
We're always putting one way behind it.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, right, let's start at two point five.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, yeah. So you're going to add that right onto the end of your motion, right?
Up to two point five million dollars.
Okay.
I, I don't have anything else to stop. Oh, a little. Little bit left. Up to two point five.
It looks like it's coming higher.
Yeah.
I'm moving.
So whatever you want, as long as you wrap this up.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Lord, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those are favor. That's you. Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
So kind of busy day tomorrow, but by the time. We start making the talks, or Peter will be a primary point connection to the house.
Okay.
And we'll raise it all over, so we're seeing, kind of have a heads up that one's going to be.
Sounds good. All right, thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that's actually all on wood and sand purchase. All right, so we went to get three, uh, prices. One of them, we've got a price and then drove into a quality area. It was acceptable, and then also the people supply question will admit, no, you're going to just go buy a sample one percent period. We love that relationship. So that didn't end up coming. So we have Churchill Sand and Gravel, which is formerly David P. A. Uh, and that is five dollars per yard. If we haul it ourselves, and then eight if it was to be delivered by them, which is typically what we've done because of the distance of hauling. And we have ladies construction of five dollars, um, if we were to haul it ourselves, and nine if they were to help us. The purchasing policy grants, uh, folks that connect to Nordwog taxpayers and more residents to the ten percent variance. So that then reduces land support over, uh, uh, to four fifty, uh, per yard, for consideration purposes, not going to be actuals. And then theoretically, it's going to reduce the haul price by ninety cents of eight, ten. We're pretty confident in our ability to haul this in ourselves given the distance. Um, so it would be actually really cost savings for us because we would be paying that third party to haul. We would be doing all, all in ourselves. We would be cutting off the winding hill.
Instead of this one here.
Right. That's just the thing. And so we have all we could do, even if we use two of their trucks to keep hauling, just in mind. Right. So between the added cost of their hauling, uh, and whatnot, and, and Joe's, uh, said, you know, just for our truck hauling, whoever's there, stock piecing. Uh, would have sufficient work if we brought in on any extra trucks, it'd be too much. Uh, so, A, the ability to bring it back to Nordwog, and B, the ability to save ourselves. Uh, so A, the ability to bring it back to Nordwark, and B, the ability to save ourselves some money because we would just be doing all in.
Quality of the product on these two are the same.
Joe was on, and.
Easy choice. So I make a motion that we award a bit to ladies construction for winter sand purchase. Want the dollar amounts compared?
Uh, the per ton, please.
At five dollars per yard.
I was.
Sorry, yeah. Excellent. Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Part of that motion have been that it would be held by our, I would.
Wow, well, it was, right, it was the five dollar per yard, so. Yeah, it's good, it will be, yeah. Is that gonna be fun? Yeah.
Discussion action on junkyard turn for seventy-four cent.
This is Zach, that, that race chassis and recycling, strictly renewable, we renewed it last year. Yeah, it's in on time and early. I don't know if you've been by, it's across from trees, please, pretty much. Yards pretty fully fenced in, I drive by two or four times a day. And the yard looks, you know, might make a little noise here and there. It's in compliance with the voluntary conditions that the Florida appeals set for back in twenty nineteen. And so my recommendation is that the board waive the public hearing requirement and approve the permit for these junkyard applications and endorsements. Since there've been many complaints or. We have not received any complaints in the last year. We haven't had no communication with motor vehicles about the property. Uh, and between me driving by a couple times a day and co-driving by a couple times a day, and a couple random visits from the phone office, there hasn't been any.
Well, that's good, excellent.
I hope that we waive the public hearing and we move to approve their application.
I'll second that. Motion and second to wait and approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's it.
Uh, discussion action on donations.
I'll make a motion to accept donation, a hundred dollars from Joseph and Yona for you to support the community. Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody.
We accept five hundred and eleven dollars for a sent Salvation Army for milk screen, milk screen school supplies.
I think to accept. All those in favor?
I know that we accept, oh, we have a Muslim days, five hundred for private savings, hundred fifty meters of yard maintenance, a total of six hundred fifty dollars for Muslims.
All of favor?
Special action on naming this poll voting.
Uh, so this just gives somebody voting rights at a annual meeting, which on the thirtieth of September, a customary manager would be the first, and if there was another person attending, you could appoint them as the alternate. There's a motion to appoint someone as the official voting delegate. So, yeah. Jerry, you wanna be voting delegate? Do you wanna meet with him? Guess you did, remember she was there?
No, thank you.
You do?
I don't have to do anything?
No. Okay, so I'll make a motion that Richard is the, Richard and Jim are voting delegates.
Second.
Are you both delegates or want alternate?
Alternate.
Okay, Richard is voting delegate in two circles. And Jim is an alternate.
Second.
All those in favor?
No.
Other business.
Okay. If we get a motion, that's anything you request to the agenda, please.
Uh, this is Troy Blodgett, who used to live in Nordwark. Uh, he's now elected to buy these properties, styles of town line with Skogaden. So he's actually gonna be coming up from Skogaden, and then his house portion of his property is gonna be in Nordwark. So he had to go through the process of getting a street name that Nordwark and Mercer and Skogaden did not have. He's gonna give him off a big little hill in Skogaden and up in Nordwark.
Okay.
Well, yeah. So his request, after several that I turned down because it sounded like it's a close name, is Valley View Drive.
Where is it?
Hey, yeah, sorry, block thirty, yeah, block thirty-four, right here. That's the town line, block thirty-four, and that's a little hill, and that's a little hill in Nordwark.
Okay. And he's gonna put a road in from middle of Hills, there again. In Skogaden, but he's gonna be living in Nordwark.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's do that. Perfect, thanks.
How do everybody feel about that? Would we, would we like it?
I was gonna watch the diagrams.
I'll, I'll take a.
Valley View Drive. Sure, so I move that we accept the proposed Valley View Drive for Mr. Blodgett.
Okay.
The second.
And the second to accept, any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's everybody. The next would be to add a cemetery or cemetery quickly in the agenda.
So. Second, second, all those in favor? Everybody?
And this would be to sign the cemetery quickly and leave the normal half lot, two seventeen, that's Sunset Cemetery for Ronald Lovey Fair.
So moved.
And second, any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's everybody.
Yeah, so, uh, Ward Hill. As for vinyl, we had a auto dealer or junkyard or recycler in there that left. And we've got, so it was mentioned to me, more activity there, a lot of cars piled up in there. So I don't know if they're licensed or someone could take a look at that if they would please, but this junk car is being hauled in there and there's something going on there. Thank you.
Is this, um?
Mackenzie Circle.
Yeah. The boy that had that has that lodge out on one thirty-one, unless he sold it.
Oh, they've moved, he's in Texas or.
Well, I know that the mother and son.
Travis, yeah.
Oh, it's been, right, yeah.
It's transferred six times. Yeah, yeah, it's been through two or three different people since then.
Anything else?
We turn.
Nothing left.
So moved.
Nailed it.
So second, second, right, exactly, all those in favor?
Wait a minute, who made the gosh?
I got a second.
Might still be meatloaf left.